I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, God-armed, and with liberty and justice for the best.
The first order of business is to approve tonight's agenda. Get a motion to approve it.
Motion to approve?
I'll second. Got a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? So carried. Everybody have a chance to read the minutes from the last meeting of May 21st, regular council meeting? Any additions or deletions? Get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Seconded.
Got a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? So carried. To approve the listed claims from May 2019. Everybody have a chance to read them? Any questions on the claims?
I'll make a motion to accept the listed claims.
I'll second.
Got a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? So carried. To accept the financial statements that General Water Sewer Funds has of May 31st, 2019.
Motion to approve?
Seconded.
Got a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? So carried. To accept the May 2019 liquor store operating statement?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? So carried. Public Works, Nick Sears, he had a public works. What'd you get done this month?
Just normal summer stuff. Just gotta give you guys a heads up idea too, when we did the water connections for, um, brandy corn stuff, we did find some service lines were leaking. Probably leaking for a long time, so we got those fixed, so that might help on some water loss.
Did you complete that water line at, uh, One Stop Over there?
Yep, yep, they're, they're turned on, so I'm all done.
So they have a water actually under Highway 11 now to the, I guess it'd be the south side of the highway now. Yep, One Stop has it, and did Mrs. Brown get hooked up?
Yep.
So two connections there.
Two connections.
We got that list right here. Did we put meters in there?
Yep, yep.
There are meters in. Okay, um. I had, I seen you did a little more work. Did you get that done at Johnson's on that culvert?
Yes, yep, Dale's had with that, so hopefully that will, I guess another heavy rain will tell us, but it should be good there.
I see the mowings continuing in between the rainstorms, so keep it, uh...
The other guys are gonna stay on top of it.
That's one thing, if you happen to see that, I noticed, uh, the superintendent for KGM, I seen him today, so I would expect after firing up some of this work at the, uh, you know, on the bypass here and there.
Yep.
So with that said, I, if you get a chance to see the state inspector, ask him if he's made any progress on, uh, he was gonna ditch from, uh, is it First Street where Abrams live?
First Avenue?
Hmm?
First Avenue?
Yeah, from First Avenue, he was looking at ditching from First Avenue down to what the street intersection. About a park ditching. To eliminate that water that's ponded in the ditch by being big, so...
Yeah, we get that sometimes.
Okay, well, if you happen to see the state inspector, just, you know, you're open around, just ask him about that. Um, have anything else you've been thinking about?
No, you got, I was working the bench of the water.
I'm just gonna ask about the chips over there at the playground.
Yep, they're all lined up, just waiting for it to be dried enough to dump them in there.
And I know you said you were gonna put a mat over the chips, I think we should take the chips right out of there. The chips, we, like, we have new, new fresh chips here. They're just renewed ones.
Let's talk, we can level it off, put a mat down and put the other ones on it, but we can dig it down too.
Otherwise, you still got the weeds under growing.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're starting to compost as well.
Yeah, they're broke right now, or something. Yeah, we could get them all done there.
Besides that, they must be able to fold in some place unless they, if they're not able to fold, they're composted. Either way, I'll, either way, I promise you, I'm moving. One other, um, we're by the sign, we got, uh, they were small bushes, but now they grown taller than the sign. Need to prove it. I think they're putting a lot of pressure on the back of the sign, and they, the trunk comes out on the front, and they go round like this on the back.
You talking about the radio over there?
Yeah, so...
Was that a ditching?
Would you say?
Could you trim all of them?
I think I've heard of it.
Take them, take them all.
But you didn't look at it and see, but it, I think they're kind of pushing towards the back of the sign there, like you can look at it. I hate to remove any, any flower or flowering bushes or anything like that.
They're flowering crabs on the backside. They're flowering crab trees on the backside.
On the backside, but these are right front, right? No, these aren't back, they started in front, but they went around the back, and they're just as high as the sign right now.
They were meant to cover up that structure in the back?
Yeah.
Doesn't look very great?
Yeah. It was a camouflage, right?
Is there any way we can just prune them back, or are they...
They were pruned last summer, they were pruned back. I was talking like the roots and stuff, I think, and trunks pushing on.
Well, why don't we take a look at that and just use your best judgment, I really should, but if the idea was to cover something, make sure it's, you know, still stays covered, but do we have to be pruning? Do we have to be pruning?
Of course.
So, um... How about tweets? Did you get tweets done?
No, no, didn't get over there yet.
Okay, uh, anything else for?
No.
All right, next guy.
Thank you.
Uh, the next order of business is just to notify everybody, the county's notify us before we end up with, uh, streetlights, there'll be three streetlights installed at the intersection over here, the Highway 11, if you did get, well, there is right there. Yeah, come on.
Sure.
Nick, second.
Yeah, I'm Trent Nicholson, by the way, uh, the assistant county engineer. Um, yeah, I figured I'd stop in and, uh, talk about the potential streetlights that we have going in. As part of the trunk Highway 11 overpass project, um, MinDOT provided the design, bid the design, uh, it was a year and a half ago. That design includes three streetlights at the Cassat 20 intersection and two streetlights at the Cassat 23 intersection. These streetlights are stainless steel, um, you know, fairly ornamental, nice looking lights. The issue that we, uh, that we've come upon is there's a 50% cost share with these lights between MinDOT to the county. The MinDOT bid came in at $90,000.
Full.
So, for five lights, $90,000. So, the county would be on the hook for $45,000 then. In the meantime, I went to Minnesota Power and asked Minnesota Power for a vote to do the work. They figured that they could do it substantially cheaper. Um, they did provide me a quote, however, their lights are mounted on wood poles. And they, they quoted four, four poles. Uh, their quote came in at a little over $18,000. So, that's a, that's a pretty big cost difference. Uh, I have, I've asked MinDOT if they would be interested in, in the cost share for the wood poles, they said no, they have no interest in that, so that would be a county cost.
What is the, what do the wood ones look like? Are they just the standard?
Wood one is just the standard, standard wood pole, 50 feet, uh, so I think the, the light would be mounted at 42 feet versus 40 feet for the metal poles. Um, I think the, the arm is 12 feet, I believe. Yep, 12-foot arm. Now, today I contacted the project manager for the trunk Highway 11 overpass project to see if they would be interested in reducing the amount of streetlights out there. I think five, five is a bit of an overkill, I think. Uh, you know, if we could reduce that down to one, maybe it would be a little bit more cost effective to do the...
Wouldn't you say one, we got...
As in one per intersection, sorry.
So instead of three at this one, you'd, you'd recommend only one?
One.
One at Chapel Lane?
Or whatever, yeah, yeah, whatever, whatever MinDOT deals with.
It seems like a pretty big intersection, I don't know if, uh, how it looks, and I'd be surprised if, you know, I don't know illumination or saving design or anything, so I can't comment on that. You'd think they, they would, they would design something within the parameters. I don't know if they'd design overkill, I guess you could research that, because certainly we'd like the best pole we could get, but I understand the county's paying it and they got, got only so many money. But obviously, this is a pretty big intersection, the other one is, is a much smaller intersection compared to this, there's a lot more going on there. You may make that suggestion because that would reduce it by, you know, only reduce one, by, it would reduce two poles, so if we could do, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, uh, you know, in my mind, we would like to...
And put the county share down to 27,000 then.
In my mind, I'd like to reduce the amount of light pollution as well for this area.
Well, I'd, I'd like to see that, if you can do that for us, Trent, if you can get the better poles, but if, if at all possible, if two lights are sufficient and one at Chapel Lane at 23, and, uh, they, you know, they're packed up and they do the light, I mean, originally there wasn't one there at all.
Yep.
Apparently, I didn't think that was necessary, I remember bringing that up at, uh, you know, the pre-construction conference here we had, so...
Yeah, and actually, uh, before the trunk Highway 11 project, we were gonna put a, a light at the intersection of, uh, Cassat 23. Just a single light, it was gonna have to be outside of MinDOT right away. It's, it's nice to be able to work with MinDOT right now because they're, they're a lot more willing to put a pole in there right away. The wood poles would have to be recessed off the road slightly more than the metal poles because there, uh, there is no collision protection or breakaway protection on a wood pole.
Would there be protection on the pole?
No, no, no protection on, on the pole, but a metal pole, it's a breakaway, yeah, so the wood poles would have to be out of a clear zone, so an additional, say eight feet back from, uh, from the location.
Well, I'd certainly like to see if you could pursue that and see if we can get down, obviously, if there wasn't any there to start with, I think one was a big improvement.
Yep.
And so obviously, that must fall into some kind of guidelines that's acceptable. And this one here, if two is acceptable, you know, that, that would cut the county share down, but, well, you know, you go from, you know, five to three, so it cuts it by, you know, two fifths, which is substantial.
Yeah, I, I do plan on bringing it to the county board for discussion on, I think it's the, it's the ninth or the seventh, I don't recall what the, what the board meeting is in, in July, but, uh, it's a committee, the whole meeting. There might be some discussion, you know, if, if, if the state right here would like to go with the metal poles, maybe there's a, a cost sharing to make up a little bit of a difference between the metal poles and the wood poles, um, but it's, it's a decision for the county board to pursue.
Well, right now, if you went along, that'd be from 18,000, wood poles would be 18,000, and these would be 27 if, if they agreed to two and one. So, I, I think that probably helps the county on their decision-making process anyway. Uh, well, that's great that we're getting the rights, uh, you'll have to see what, uh, you're saying taking that to county board?
Yeah, it'll be in the committee of the whole meeting on, it's either July 7th or July 9th, whatever that Tuesday is.
Keep us posted on that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
All right, thank you. Hey, as long as the county, you're the actual county engineer, right?
I am the interim, yep.
Is there any other questions we gotta, like, county votes here or anything?
Thank you. Thank you. Let's see, okay, well, I'll give you a little update, County Road 130, uh, there's a couple of drivers in there working, uh, you know, a couple of property owners who requested that at the very far end, West End project, that new culvert we put in, and, uh, you know, it would help some of the drainage area, just to drive with culvert, very little cost. I talked to Roger, uh, this morning about that and the property owner, so that, that's gonna be done. Uh, it looks like, uh, they're, they're coming along, oh, is Nick, Nick, uh, I instructed them, and you can check them, if you need a couple loads of fill, they're hauling some of this fill away, and there's some fairly good fill, some pure black dirt, matter of fact, and they're just wasting the pond, uh, you should maybe put some of that, at least the better stuff, and if you can talk to the truck driver, talk to Danny, talk to, uh, Vermon, somebody, and we should store, you know, especially the black stuff, there's some pretty nice black stuff, but store some fill, you know, back by the pond there. Just make sure that there's no, uh, issue with the road going in and out there, you know, I, I told the one truck driver, you know, so they don't overload or anything, so they don't, it's a minimal road, but you get a water break or something, and you got some fill to put in it, you know, it's a pretty nice fill there, so I don't think you're having no trouble, but see if you can get some of that put in there.
Okay, other than that?
Culverts in, how many?
Oh, all the culverts are in, they've been in for some time, there's one more that they added, but also, uh, they basically got the ditching done on the south side road, and they're gonna start at the north side now, and, uh, so that'll be coming pretty good, and then there's just a little final grading, and the black stuff will start up there. And Nick was gonna, Nick was gonna adjust, if you notice in the ditch, there's some water service boxes, Nick would, uh, take those down, you know, down, down to the bottom of the ditch, so, you know, there's some are sticking up a foot or so, so it's nothing to deal. Okay, uh, moving on, uh, we got that, well, I think I'll leave this to over at the LCMR, a grant presentation that he attended down in, him and Tom Doherty. Appreciate that, that you guys went there, just like an update and an ad for us.
Yeah, we drove down there and spent the night, and, uh, went to the meeting and, uh, explained a little of that in order of the spiel that we had to save, and showed them, uh, computer thing, the presentation, and, uh, they ended up voting yes, and they're working us to $200,000, uh, for the dock.
The timeframe to, to...
It's, it's three years.
Three years, yeah.
Spent the money.
So, would it look time to tweak our program and...
Yeah, tweak it and fix, change everything, anything that we want, I guess.
All right.
Uh, we have to go down again on the 27th for the other one, but we'll be working on that.
That is the larger one, just to get the grant.
Seven hundred and sixty thousand, yeah.
Okay. Okay, uh, next, we could have considered this, uh, with the biannual, the budget, the state biannual budget, uh, we can put in a request for, uh, proceeds, uh, for the peer project that we got, obviously, a simple request for it, uh, be identical to what we submit to the LCMR for that $760,000. It's basically a duplication, but if you don't get it from one, you might get it from the other. I, I can't think it's possible that you get both from, you get both of them, but, you know, you basically get two shots at the same thing. If one would come out of the state budget, uh, you know, the biannual budget, and the other one is coming from the LCMR funds, which, that you're meeting on the 27th, which we've been shortlisted for, and basically, you give your, like, it works like the other one, I guess, if there's an interview process?
Yep, you will go through the presenting, the presentation, and then you'll meet with the senators.
And who's gonna attend that?
Uh, it'll be myself and Tom, and, um, Mr. Servani?
Servani?
Servani, and, uh, and whoever.
I think engineer.
I have consulting engineer, I think we've got four or five of us.
So they'll, they'll be attending that, and, when, when is it, Nick?
27th at 3:30.
Okay, and what's the timeframe on that money?
That will start, that's 2020 money, and we have till 2023 to spend it.
So almost two and a half years, three...
Well, they, well, I don't think they'll award it right away, because the money that we got awarded yesterday was 2018 months.
Oh, so, so they may not, but you'll need it if you got it, so, okay, but we can try it. How long does it take for us to get the money?
Once it's approved, that's, well, that's, we, not, we were told tomorrow, we'll find out when the check shows up, or, but they do it ACH, I have no idea.
I think maybe Mr. Servani, uh, maybe you can sit on some of these questions.
It's actually a real investment, is it? It's a real investment.
Greetings, everybody. My name is Eric Servani. Um, some of the answers to your questions are, the LCCMR is lottery funds, and that goes into a trust fund, and the interest off that trust fund that is given to this commission, about $60 million, that gives it out in grants. The legislature has to approve the work of the commission, and so what you found last year in the session was, the legislature added the $200,000 for the rainy project, so that is available until July 1st, after the work plan was approved last week. So, that money's available until July 1st, 40. The money that we're applying for now for the LCCMR, um, if it gets approved, will be available July 1st, next year, okay? So how the process works is the commission takes about 300 projects that were submitted from across Minnesota, they drop it down, cut off most of them, pick 120, one is the rainy project, or rainy project, and, um, the commission sets aside 20 minutes, and they go through about, you know, 30 or 40 projects a day, and you just run through them, and then at the end of that, they rank them. There's another series of meetings that happen in July and August and September, and they pick roughly $60 million worth of projects, roughly about 50 projects.
Sixty, 60 million?
60 million dollars.
And that would be picked in August?
It would be picked in July and August, okay? And then what happens is, um, the projects that are picked are asked to submit a work plan, like you did, Carl Sler, um, that says, okay, here's where we're gonna approve the money, here's the timeline that we're gonna spend the money. Those work plans then are approved by the commission in the fall, and then they, they pass a proposal to send to the legislature that lists all the projects and all the work plans. Then it goes to the legislature. You still don't have the money, legislature has to approve it, House Senate, the governor has to sign it. Sometimes the legislature, the recent years, has changed the project mix. Some projects get dropped, some gets, get added, whatever is dead, um, so sometimes it's a good thing, sometimes it's a bad thing, depending on who you are. Um, and then once it's approved and signed into law, it's available the following year. Now, um, I recommended to the city administrator that we should always have two tracks together for what we need, um, just in case for some reason we don't get 100% of the money that we asked for at LCCMR, we're gonna submit a state capital bonding request. Now, that is not general fund money, that's a general obligation bond that the legislature approves. Now, the legislature usually gets about $6 billion with the request from places like your city, the University of Minnesota, Minnesota Department of Education, the Minskew system, all kinds of counties and local governments, and then the legislature does a series of tours, uh, the two committees, one in the House and the one in the Senate, they pick projects, and they actually physically will come up and look at, for example, your boat in, um, the summer and the fall. And then in the legislature, once it starts, they'll have hearings, just like Tom and the Congressman Wilcox attended in the legislature, where you submit your project, they ask some questions, and then hopefully you get into the final either House or Senate bonding bill, which are usually different, they come together at a conference committee, and then it has to be passed by the legislature. Now, the thing with the general obligation bond, it has to be passed with a super majority of votes, 60% of the legislature has to do it, not a straight majority, so it drives compromise and micromanish, because one party can't decide, and both, both parties have to work together, which is a good thing. Uh, and usually they do a bonding bill every other session, in the short session, that's what happens this year, coming up this next year in 2020. Um, there's no guarantee they will do a bonding bill, it's likely, they did not do one this year, um, and usually they're right around $1 billion to 1.5 million.
So that's our second route, and that's what, this resolution, uh, 'cause we, if we have to approve it, it has to be submitted by...
Friday.
By Friday. So it's just a second route for the same thing that we've been trying to get through the LCMR. Obviously, if you approve by one, the other one would know what, right? I mean, the chances would be to approve by both are...
Well, where I come from, we try to always get as much as we possibly can, right? And so you, you are using this money to match the federal money, correct? So even if you get 100% of the LCCMR money, you know, uh, maybe what we do is we continue to ask for a little extra of state bonding money, so you have a caution in case your project comes in over budget, in case you don't get all the federal money that you're expecting.
So then do you modify your request, or you just, you say, I'd like to modify the amount and the cap price or something, because you've received some funding, you'd like to...
That's right, and generally, very, yeah, maybe very few projects that go to the LCCMR or state bonding get what they originally asked for. Usually they're cutting back in interest and compromise, so that's why I encourage the city to apply for this bonding, to make up, to get a cut, say you get $500,000, you know, then you can ask the state bonding for 250.
So if, you know, look, the whole exercise of this, uh, this is a whole, the meaning of this whole exercise is to get these grants in for approval. You know, as far as, you know, conceptually, what we're doing is looking for funds for peer, you know, what color it is, and how long it is, and whether it's got electricity or floodlights and all that stuff, that's all, you know, that's all will be handled after you get the grants and, and the proceeds, you know, there's still gonna be public meetings on that, and input from whoever and whatever, try to come up with the best design, best, best solution on that, so, okay. Well, with that said, I'd like to see if we could get a resolution to, to submit, uh, the request for the biannual capital budget.
I'd like to make my recommendation to, uh, bring the motion up to support the biannual capital budget request for 760. Make a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second?
I'll second it.
Before we move it, and is there any further discussion? I maybe jumped into it a little quick, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, um, there's a form that's kind of, gives you kind of what the resolution should look like, um, on our management budget website, and then you should do a second thing, you should, um, have in the resolution that you're only submitting one project, and it is your top priority, okay? So just if you consider adding that.
Okay. To make it top priority, huh?
That's our only project.
Yeah. You wanna re, uh, reread the motion? Restate the motion so we all understand it.
Um, to approve the biannual capital budget request, um, I drafted a resolution that I'll need to amend, so I don't know that we're approving the actual resolution that you had before you.
It's not a motion, or are we actually...
It is a motion to...
Approve it.
To approve their request for the biannual capital budget, um, so I'll just say for the resolution, for the, yeah, to support the resolution 2019-05, as amended.
Okay, read it to us, and we'll get a motion in seconds, so we don't...
A motion to approve resolution 2019-05, as amended, to, um, to support the biannual capital budget request. the biennial capital budget request.
Can you get a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, you got a motion and a second, all favor. Opposed? So carried. Okay. Now, the next order of business is being ordered with this agreement. We have an agreement that I think I'll have a chance to look at and it's an agreement through Mr. Sivannik for consulting to help us walk us through the process, through both the CMR, well, not only for this, other, other projects that we have or other issues we may have where we need some consultation. So he's offered us a one-year contract to basically do our lobbying or whatever we call it, consulting. And I'd like to turn it forward to Wilbur. Wilbur, you probably have a little more insight in this. You attended one of these, whatever, interview as an act and what was, you know, do they get intense?
Yes, they do. It was, my heart was beating nine hundred miles an hour and I'm sweating like a dog. Yeah, and the thing with this is that Gary here has so much more knowledge than I and Tom have on the work and what's going on down there, who to talk to, foreign funds and he knows that we don't know. Tom and I can run up down to St. Paul and the town, but we don't have the knowledge. I mean, these people that are down there, they got experts with them, they got expert material, expert engineers, I mean, they got people there that, there's just Tom and I, so they're lucky that Tom knew most of the answers for what they wanted, but as far as getting help for the city, not only we're going to work with us on the pier, but he worked with us on any project, not above, just thinking here are pedestrian crossing over the rail tracks. But we met today about putting a pedestrian, walkway, ADA, acceptable and everything, and I'm sure you would be able to help us if we need funds for this kind of project like that, so it's just not...
What do you, how long have you been at this guy?
I hate to say it, Mr. Mayor, but about thirty-eight years.
So you really know which, you know the ropes anyway, you know, which George Tanak on, obviously, have you worked at Highway Department or anything, have you lobbied with the Highway Department? I mean, just issues like this, little street light that, you know what I mean? That's, that's the thing, it's just not just this biennial last step work looking at the LCMR thing, there's other things that we definitely can use some help on, just like that. Right there, there's a, you know, we have a question with county for, you know, some support, you know, obviously we've got a little bit of funds and that, but is that things like you work with Mid-Adapt and who knows if we're going to need...
Well, I know if it wasn't for David Dill, we wouldn't have Chapel Lane out there, so you really have to get to know the legislators and what pockets of money are available and who's, who's willing to listen to you, so, I mean, that's beyond most of our knowledges and yes, we've made some good connections down there and that, but obviously I don't have anything like on our resume like you would have, so.
So I'd like to bring the motion that we accepted. Well, is there any more questions for him? I think, you know...
Mr. Mayor, is this something that we are hiring by the month or by the time that we use some or...
Sure. Maybe I should give you a little more background of what I do and how I do it to give you a sense of that. You know, I worked for quite a few communities like yours and I'll give you a couple examples. I was in this room many years ago when we started what was called the Gorges National Park Clean Water Project. Tom was here, I know, and what the problem was is that we have these communities from Crane Lake, Ash River, Captoa and the community around Rainier here that were at a resource. And so since I was hired to do that, we formed a joint powers agreement between the counties and with the townships. And I believe that was in two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight. So far, by diligently and creatively working, these communities received over twenty-eight point five million dollars so far of grant line, not loans and grants, to put in community source systems. Punk's point is...
And you worked on that.
I worked on that, I was the person responsible primarily as the lobbyist and the only lobbyist. And I hate to say that it happens because you hire a lobbyist, it also happens because you happen to have good legislators. A lobbyist is only as good as your legislative supporters are too, and you've got really exceptional ones with Senator Mauch and Representative Becklin. You know, we like to take the credit for their work, you know, and get contracts from folks like you, but what we do is, you know, personally, I become basically a staff person to the legislators, like Representative Becklin. I'll help him line up votes, answer questions of other committee members, other legislators, stand up the process, make sure you're at the right points at the right time, because they want to hear from you, Counselor, they don't necessarily want to hear from me, they want to hear what you and Tom did was was exceptional when you were down there. And they don't expect everyone to be, you know, the perfect presenter, they'd rather talk to real people who have real lives on the ground. I also work in Crane Lake for the township and exactly some of the issues there, if you notice, there's a paved shoulder on both sides of the border, Crane Lake. Well, that's because we worked on it, we got the county to do it. There is a call for a bridge over into the township of Crane Lake that the county didn't want to pay for. Well, they ain't going to pay for it. You know, there's all kinds of little stuff like that.
Put the sewer under it.
Yeah, exactly. So you're aware of that one from, right when I was listening to the streetlight thing, you know, I get a lot of that stuff, I'm a former county commissioner in St. Louis County too, so I understand how counties operate, I understand how the DOT operates. I'm not going to be able to solve all your problems, but at least I'll bring some creativity to it and try to help you work through some of these things.
We have a perfect example where we can use this, you know, help and I think if the city's going to be, keep moving forward, there's obviously that we're going to need legislative help and, and grant money and we can leverage that into doing some of the things that we want, whether it's roads, bridges, lighting, whatever it is, we do need that. I really believe it's a complicated deal, but obviously we're, you know, we just got one city clerk here, so it's, it gets to be too much put on her shoulders to get that and, you know, like you say, we're supposed to have limited knowledge of who and when, and I know you can arrange the meetings, like you say, they want to hear from natural people, but who wants to hear it? You know, so you have to make those arrangements for us and who and when and where. So I think going forward, you know, basically, I think to navigate us if we want to keep moving forward and I think it's a real necessary project.
And I should answer Counselor's question about the price. So how I operate is because I'm basically a one-person shop, I don't have an office building and I don't have staff. I do have one person who works with me, you might know, is Jeff Anderson. Jeff was Congressman Nolan's district director for six years, so I brought Jeff on to give me a hand, but we basically have a retainer. The amount is one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, which is my minimum retainer. I work, I don't charge by the hour, you won't get a bill for a coffee machine, you won't get a bill for a meal or a hotel room. You know, once in a while, if I have to do something very specific for you that takes me and I have to drive somewhere, you're going to go for mileage at the standard IRS rate, that's the only bill you're ever going to get over and above the twelve fifty a month. And generally, my goal is to try to do a good enough job where you have me on for a few years. And if I don't do a very good job, you should get rid of me.
For you too, I know you're, you understand the state, you know, you navigate the state houses really well and I know your type with all the air agents that's reported into your house several times. So how about on the federal level? Have you done anything on the federal level? Because obviously with the railroad in here and there might be some funds available to help us with, you know, with beautification of railroads or something like that or whatever we might need, we had some discussion with the railroad and, you know, they're willing to, they're willing to work with us, they're just not willing to pay for it. But that's a big loss that they're even willing to work with you, so that was a big, that was a weak step.
Yeah, that's a good question. That's, Jeff Anderson's worked six years in Congress as a congressional coordinator, so he works with me, so that's a value. In addition to that, I worked for several years for Mr. Overstar, a previous congressman here. I've worked for US Senator John Kerry, I worked for Governor Mike Dukakis, I've done a lot of national work. I've worked on high-speed rail issues, I had a contract between Duluth and the Twin Cities, so I'm really familiar with the federal...
Really, this, like even this LCR grant or this biennial grant, if we were to receive them, the biennial, that's a different, we get the money, but what we're trying to do is leverage that in so we can get that federal loan, or basically it's our matching funds. So there again, we have to take it to another level, but this is just to help us secure to get the, hopefully, the seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars and if there's any chance of getting any more, that's, that's great, so. Well, if you make a...
Any more questions, gentlemen?
And Tom, did you say?
We lobbied?
Oh, okay, we got a motion? We got a motion to accept, sorry, to accept this contract, is that correct?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second, all favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thank you. I think Cheryl, you can take it from there, right?
Yes.
And I think everybody should know what was... There's some issue, comment on it.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your business.
Thank you.
Like I said, I love your job here.
Appreciate for the insight on that, I hope we clarified everything for some of the people in the audience, too, that this is just helping us secure federal grants and various state grants, give us on the ticket for maybe some money.
Okay, thank you for having me on.
Thank you. At that, at that point, open the floor, any questions?
So I think, from what I've heard is that our couple members, I've done the hearing this morning, St. Paul...
Just John, I mean, Wilbur and Tom Doherty.
Okay, well, I had some comments that I had emailed them earlier and it was not, somehow there's not a set of comments. She, she emailed me back at nine o'clock yesterday morning and said that I would have till ten o'clock, of course, I was talking out of the office, I didn't see it, and one hour ago, to call them and identify myself, which I'd already done in writing and a letter, and they wouldn't read my comments in the record.
Are you talking the LCMR...
Yes, I was the head, I was the one that was...
...exceptional...
So, you know, to me, this whole process has not really been a full process and if you guys down there, I mean, you could have said, well, that guy's a mole. So I just think that there's a lot of people out there that are opposed to this Seven Oaks project, we talk to more and more people every day and I'd like to see it stop. And so I think that maybe we will start a petition and a program to somehow to stop that and I don't, I don't see why you want, any, a boat launch here anyway, why don't you just get rid of it, that's unsafe, just get rid of it and say, no boat launch. There's nothing boat launch.
I think, I think we, we're just beating the same horse that you talked about.
No, no, we're not beating the same horse, but you don't realize, and you don't run in the same circles as some of these people that go down there and use that park, those people, they don't have the big yachts, they don't have the big boats, they have some time and they maybe have a vehicle and they like to go down there, enjoy that, take their dogs down there, kids down there, have picnic down there, and it will be a big loss to the community if you get rid of it.
I don't think the park is going to disappear, John, I think you're on the assumption that we go down here and cut all the trees down and everything else, I don't, I don't see any trees having to be taken or anything else.
See, I don't trust, I don't trust, I don't, you don't have an engineer, you don't have any specs down there for that, and so we don't know what you're going to do down there and I don't trust...
Well, I'm sorry to hear that, John.
Yeah, well, that's, that's...
From the drawings that we had, preliminary drawings, and I think you could look at that, the roadway, that's, we had the railroad down there, they make sure we weren't railroad property, they just went down where we put a hole, so we took the courtesy and time and showed them where it was. But basically, it lines right up with that existing alleyway or road, if you look straight in, there's not a tree in the right way, John, and that's what the drawing clearly shows. Again, once, once it gets further along and it will be dry...
Well, no, I understand, I want to spec, I want to see a spec what you guys are going to do and I want to be able to hold you to a spec.
There will be...
I, I, in the first place, I don't want it at all, but you can't just say, well, we got this money, we'll do something and we're going to do this great thing for the community and going forward, we're going to prosper and everything is going to be great, that's BS.
John, did you ever hear about a democratic society, when the populace wants something that may disagree with what you want, it's not always me, 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 sometimes it's...
We have a lot of, they have a bunch of crap.
Really?
Now, yes, if we go off, we want to go off and get the people involved, we talk to people, but they have already said, that, that will be a sin, you guys take away that part.
Well, I don't think we're going to continue this. I guess, and I've heard your arguments, I understand it and that's why we selected the committee to, you know, Rainier, mostly Rainier citizens, make the best selection and understand that, so. I'll give you one time, go ahead.
Okay, I have comments to make, I also sent several comments to the LCCMR, I contacted every member of that org, I sent emails...
Did you get through to them?
Huh? Some of them I didn't get through, some of them I could...
Maybe you should have given John the number. Maybe you should have given John the number.
E-mailed them, I contacted them by a phone, every phone, and some emails besides. What I'm saying is, first of all, my name for the cab rock is Sue Swenson, I am a resident of Rainier, I own property of Rainier, I'm a taxpayer of Rainier, I've lived here for twenty-four years and prior to moving back to this area, I lived here for twelve or thirteen years back in the late forties, fifties and into the sixties, okay? I oppose strongly to the taking of the city park, Seven Oaks, which is the only park that is available on Rainier River. That particular area from Seven Oaks over to the Rainier River dock is city property, but that doesn't mean it needs to be taken for a boat ramp. There's already a boat ramp down Pat Road, it's not going to use very much because the majority of people do not like to go through the rapids, okay? The second point I would like to make is that there has been no public hearing, I'm not talking about public meetings, I'm talking about public hearing regarding all of these plans that you all in your steering committee put together. Thirdly, the meeting of the steering committee are not even posted on the website, so there's a lack of transparency. These things have, you know, been brought at the council in law of the large or whatever it's called, in terms of public hearings, there was one public hearing in two thousand eighteen and that was regarding the quarry. There has been no public hearing regarding any of these plans for arenas, for boat ramps, for parking, for changing Rainier in the way that special interests want it.
I think that we had a couple meetings on changing boat ramp, we just didn't pick a site, you know?
You had, you had no public hearings, you had a couple special meetings. The last special meeting you had was June fourth, for which there was a five-day posting at the, at the post office, it was not put into the paper, the majority of residents of Rainier didn't even know about it.
Would it be safe to say this?
And that was a new plan, please let me finish, that plan was a new plan. We certainly have been keeping track of all the many plans that have been submitted in terms of taking the Rainier Beach, using the other little park down on Main Street, considering taking the property down by the Rainier Talons, we're aware of all those and using the, the parking lot next to where Boyam lives, we're aware of all those things. What we're not aware of is ever seeing any kind of plans to take this until June fourth, two thousand nineteen, exactly two weeks from today. So if you think there's transparency in government, kiss it goodbye, because none of you... So if you think there's transparency in government, kiss it goodbye because none of you have it.
So I take it you're opposed to any improvement or any addition to the Seven Oaks park?
I am opposed to any change to Seven Oaks park. It is used right now, as John has said, by a number of people. A lot of kids go down there and they.
I think, I, I, I think, I, I think we, we understand you're opposed to it. You know, I've, I've heard from multiple people in the audience at different various times you were here, that they are in favor of it.
Who? It was never brought up, Seven Oaks Park was taken, it was taken four hundred years ago.
And that was discussed and, and, and the residents of, we had several.
You mean one resident that spoke up three times?
Uh, I can see two right here that were in, three that were here.
That were in.
Four that were here. So I see four right now that's.
Four residents or about 10?
Sharon, Mike Highball, Mrs. Trotty. I, I did, you commented, but I didn't know if you were in favor or against it. He did say, he has commented on it.
Yeah.
And I'm, and I don't know who else is here, but I know there's other people here, so.
There were other people other than us, close to us, close to us. You people have not had a hearing. We're asking for a public hearing. We're asking for democracy. We're asking for the people of Rainier, all 600 residents, to be able to have a say to what happens to the city. Now, and.
Do we know it? Do we know it?
Huh?
Do we know it?
That's what I'm asking.
And we'll discuss if we want to have a public hearing on this, okay?
Public hearing. And I would like the steering committee minutes to be put on the website so they can be available for everybody to read them.
Well, we'll decide if we're going to have it, okay? I think it's been discussed plenty and thankful that people took, took the time to get us the money.
Just one question. I asked you the question and you didn't answer it, but why do we have to have a boat ramp there?
Oh, that's where the grant come in, John. We applied for a grant for a boat ramp and, and a parking lot, and we were awarded the grant. Now, I, I noticed she wrote a letter and, and said something that we should go buy some property and build a parking lot and then put it on the tax rolls. Is that what you want, John? Is that really what you want?
No, I don't want to.
Go buy.
I, I don't want to.
Better than being a consultant or lobbyist, I think.
That's enough. Any other questions? Yes, Sharon?
I'm sorry, as I work today, I did see one people outside my, my business in my home that look official and are pleased there. And it made me a little nervous when people are pointing towards your place, they're talking, you don't know what's going on. So maybe we could have some, something to let people know what's going on. It might be nice because it is, it's, it's a little scary, you know, when you see people staring right at your place and pointing at it.
I'm sure you can't, I'm sure I can't put it here up there.
Well, it's a little daunting when you see just people look official and we're right outside your home, pointing towards it and.
That was a railroad. They, they asked to see it and.
And like you said.
And so they were here on the other meeting because they were, so we, I can understand you see a group of suited people walking around looking at it. But I mean, whatever goes to say, can you see where the property line is? I said, well, we'll certainly show you what is, is proposed. And so we did that.
Well, they're putting it in these meetings, they let us know we had.
Yeah. We didn't expect they were to ask that question, Sharon. We had a different meeting on a pedestrian mark and some other issues with the, the building. And at the end, they asked, they heard about this, so they asked if they could see it. So we are, we obliged.
So, now I'm somewhat satisfied with the answer that I got about the boat ramp. And who said that is a condition of the grant? Well, why would you need parking if you don't have a boat ramp? Why would you need the parking, the park boats and trailers, I assume, if you don't have a boat ramp here?
Where? I guess I, I lost your line.
So you don't commit that, okay, what you want to do is put in a boat ramp, Seven Oaks, and you want to put parking back here for.
For those people. That's correct. For anybody that uses.
For the boats and trailers.
Yeah. But also it can be multi-use.
Why would you need the, the parking here? Take up this spot here for the parking if you didn't have a boat ramp?
Sure.
If you have a boat ramp, then you just manage the other boat ramp.
I see a new hand up. Mark.
That is, it's happened to your committee. And I know this discussion has been going on for a year, plus or more. But I think bottom line is this is a marine community. It's a park community. It should have a first-class marine facility. And in my humble opinion, that includes having a boat ramp, having appropriate parking, and a first-class water facility, pier. That brings people in Rainier. And I think that's the bottom line, in my eyes. And that's what this community, community people thrive.
Uh, we have a.
There's one problem with that though, and that rainy rapids is nothing but scary, except for two months, maybe the other year, I don't know how many years. My wife will not go through the rapids. I got a 21-foot boat. That is not a good place to be driving people or directing people up the middle acre. And I mean, it is scary. She's got all the rain here in one boat when we had a small boat, because she wouldn't go through it.
Well, that was a consideration, but I guess, I guess what it is, if, if at the time the rapids or anything look undunting for you or, or too dangerous, that's something you don't want to go through. Obviously, Canadians and the city international policy consider that, that issue or didn't figure us out enough to worry about. I know I go through there every day, just about at least three times a week. But we're also trying to leave for like small boats and that, or what would they say, canoes and paddle boats, the existing ramp so they can do that. Where we see there's more of a danger than Rainier Rapids is people going in there, backing their boat in, trying to get in there, and then all the congestion. I mean, this, this thing was spurred by economic development in that area, you know, in, in our town. We look for some growth in this town so that we can, you know, try to keep some younger people here, try to, try to make this a better sort of place to live and, and work and everything else. And when we noticed that this pier project come up, there was an opportunity there to relocate a boat ramp in a different area. And that, and we left that up to the selection committee, where, where would be best, where do the least amount of impact with the motor. And, and we had an opportunity to secure some additional parking along with that. So we're piggybacking that. So now we've got some additional parking for this area and that, too. It also free up some parking in that area because with this parking of the boats over here, obviously they're not going to be parking over there. So that'll free up some parking for the, you know, all the, any, any development that we have over there. Now, I know there's been a lot of, hey, John, excuse me, there's been a lot of fingers pointed that this has all been done for Canalever. Let me tell you, Canalever bought that existing lot to pay.
I can't. I'm sorry.
Has it all been done for Canalever?
Pardon me?
What are you saying now?
Well, I'm saying a lot of fingers have been pointed that this, a lot of fingers have been pointing that this is being done specifically for Canalever. And I'd rather tell you, they secured other property, they have that parking lot right across from Moonies that they could be parking in. And so far, they haven't had anybody after 6:00 working there, taking any parking spots. And we already have a parking problem. So let's not go blame Canalever. I'm glad that they're putting development in here. And, and, and so what I'd rather see than, than a parking lot made of that lot that they bought from Woody, another building or something that would generate some tax dollars for this city, keep your taxes low, and make it a better place to live and work.
Our taxes are higher than Canalever's, so let's not even discuss that. The whole point is, we're just asking for democracy. Mark says he thinks this is a marine community. Well, do the 600 residents of Rainier.
Is there any other questions out there? Is there any other questions out there?
We have no remarks, anything out there?
I think, I think you just keep being a senior. So can I get a motion to adjourn?
Fire.
Supposed to. How many? We have one more. Tara. Excuse me, we have some other people. Tara is behind you. And I have a rester.
I have been watching the boat launching at the Spruce Street Dock for 22 years now. And it's true. We have parking issues, but I'm not necessarily persuaded that eliminating the Spruce Street launch as a motorboat location is necessary. And I don't think that it contributes to the congestion as much as, you know, as much as it maybe seems like it does. The one thing that I think would make a big difference is if we had some signage that let people know that they come down the alley around and then come back to the street dock. Because there's still room for, you know, all the people that come down to the ice cream shop. There's still room for the cars that park on Spruce Street, you know, way down the highway, not on the way to any place. And, and it's not all that much traffic. It used to be a lot more because we didn't have as many boat launch sites as we do now. So I guess I will keep thinking about it, but I'm not necessarily in favor of making the Spruce Street Dock just a canoe that I have launched. I'm not sure that there will be enough people doing that because we still have Big Lake and lots of more permits.
Okay, thank you. There is one other. Oh, yes. Well.
Oh, yeah, I was just, okay. Mine is totally different with the Rainier days, August days, of volunteers, you know, that's a huge thing for this area, bringing in people now. And it doesn't seem like we get enough volunteers to help, you know, with this passion and all, all the stuff that I got for Monday, that brings in so many people for, for you and Rainier, you know, Grill and Moonies and all that. Doesn't seem like we get a lot of help or that kind of passion or something that is so awesome for this area, you know? So if anyone wants to volunteer and be a big part of something that's huge, you know, for this area, yeah, please, their whole Gerald or, you know, anybody that can try to direct the right direction of having such a good thing for our community.
Mike, can you add?
Well, just wanted to reference that, you know, I just launch my boat every weekend. Now I have to land it down here and, you know, it used to be pretty easy. It was actually one of the easier ramps on Lake. Go ahead. Used to be. And now there's many times that I've launched my boat. It's either early enough in the morning or it's not, um, much of a vehicles park around there. But when I come back towards evening, there's times I drive out and walk around and try to find people so they can move their cars so I can get my boat out of the water. And it's getting like, we don't launch many more to place a hearing on because of that. I take the days that I'm going to launch them. I would love that we can keep the boat ramp up there. We want to keep the boat up there. We really want to keep the boat up there. But in reality is, it's not going to work, you know, with the traffic, pedestrian traffic and all the people that are going to be down there. I mean, it may not be that busy today, but in a year or two, we're looking ahead here. We're not looking behind, we're looking ahead. And that's the way it's going to be up there. It's going to be so busy that you can't get a boat in and out of there. I've been in that position, I've had to hunt people out. The other part is, it's, so we're going to put a ramp down in the river here, and when you can use it, if you feel comfortable using it, it's a good place, it's a good natural ramp. We can enhance that parkness there. I have to see great things there. And with the parking lot behind the hall, we're going to try and protect the neighbors as far as lights and having, but we need, we need extra parking here. There's talk about expanding the hall at some point. We need extra parking here. But the other thing you have to remember is, we're not just looking at a boat ramp and a parking area, looking at a loss position to help protect the lake, try to keep the basic species up early. And that's one of the big things that we're after. And that's one of the reasons we got the grant, we got, was we wanted to get, come in here and clean your hall, clean your boat, and feed the sea mussels and keep all that other stuff out of there. And as a, as a, as a lake community, that should be popular for everybody to try and protect the lake. And we've done our sewer systems and we've expanded the lake. We've done a great job of that. And let's carry this a little farther and start protecting the lake from the basic species,
Thank you, Mike.
I have one other comment. As far as, we were just down at Tara's before we came to this meeting. And for those people that are so terribly concerned about that boat ramp and safety and so on, I think it's probably not a good idea to have a bunch of kids swimming down there at a boat ramp. So perhaps you might want to post a sign, "No swimming allowed." Because if there ever would be a child injured with the boat going in, the city, I imagine, will be a bit.
Thanks, Sue. All right. It should be, maybe a bullying or a. Marty had his hand up.
I was just going to, I was going to ask one question to you, Mr. Trott, because obviously that's right in front of you. And that's, are you in support of the pier? I know you don't want a boat ramp, but if we can get a pier.
Well, I'm, I'm not opposed to the pier. If the pier comes into existence, does that mean that there is no boat ramp?
Yeah. That's what the design is, that I've seen, like, yeah, it's a big, so.
I'm not, I'm not too involved with that.
Because what I see is one of the biggest problems is boat parking. You always talk about the parking issue, but I got to tell you, there's five, 10 to 10 times a summer I come over here because I can't park. Come in, I want to have dinner, really grill, nothing with a dock, I don't want to park. You know, even your docks are full sometimes, I'll park there, I'll be nice to you, but there's no park for a boat. You go and go somewhere. And this community is losing out on a lot of opportunities, especially if you get more people coming here, you're going to have a boat problem. I, I don't see parking as our biggest issue. People, there's, people park here and walk down there, people can walk a little bit. If you don't have a spot for your boat, you're just not going to.
I don't actually see people coming in boats and parking on the city dock.
Five of them, five of them on Saturday drove away because they didn't know where to park their boat.
Watch it.
When I was on my, when I was on my boat, I came back, we lost about five, five boats just didn't know where to park or how to park. They just drove away and.
They get bored right down on the riverbank and all kind of parking down there, but they don't want to go through the rapids.
They don't, they don't know where they're at because of tourists or whatever. I'm just saying that, yes, they didn't know where to park. So they left.
Ready to go through there?
No.
No.
I could go through there. I'll go through there. Anyway, I'm just saying that there was people that didn't know where to park. And I was kind of shocked, but I don't.
I don't think it's such an age-old discussion because anytime you look at to improve something and build for the future, sometimes you have to give up something for the past, something. I had the deputy commissioner of the DNR look at that. He said, that's a terrible boat ramp, absolutely shouldn't be there. Now, that's the deputy commissioner of the DNR, so I'm not going to argue with him or nobody else should. But sometimes, and so with that said, we had to find another place for it. You know, if we're going to expand this and do this, we have to find another place for it. And that were the marching orders that we gave to the steering committee. And, and, and that's why you develop a committee. We tried to put everybody on that that we trusted and, and would make the best judgments. And, and I think they did. And, and they took a lot of time and diligence to it. Are they going to please everybody? Obviously not. But that, that's what we have to.
But the DNR.
Just excuse me. Here's a.
You know, if I understand it right, there's a lot of good, really good points made. In one point, I think we, as city council, and the steering committee can help, is the preservation of the park. That was one of the big concerns that people said, this boat ramp. My understanding is the boat ramp will not interfere with the park. In fact, it would actually enhance it and maybe make it more usable. But I think maybe the city council and the steering committee can do some work and make people, you know, help people understand the impact on the park. Because the design and the renderings really preserve the park and add more room for things like picket tables and a little more usage. I think, I think that might help a lot of people on that part.
Well, I think Mr. Rutterman made that point. He wanted to see an actual engineered drawing, which is fine, and that's what I'm saying. Like I said, the whole exercise that we've been going through right now is to secure the money for boat ramp and for parking lot and the exercise that...
The other thing, you know, in favor of all this, I think, the other thing I'm hearing is that there's a desire to see more transparency.
Yes.
And I think whether that's perception or not, I think it's one of those things that just simply need to be noted. It's things like posting minutes on the website or on Facebook or however the communication is, we can work and the steering committee can work. And really, being more transparent, that will alleviate a lot of concerns and build more trust.
A common theory.
That's what they're saying.
Well, I believe that when we started the steering committee, we had an announcement of our citizen interest in starting the steering committee for this Big Dot project. And people that were on, no, that's, I'm talking about, that was the steering committee. And what happened was, the people that showed up, the people that were on the steering committee up. We had 14 people show up for it, and that's what we limited it to, the 14, and that's how it started.
And how come those minutes are not posted on the website like the council meeting? That's so odd.
I picked the minutes of the meeting. We were just forming, just forming. There wasn't a meeting, it was just a gathering to get...
No, but they do. I mean, you've had several meetings on the steering committee.
We had a couple of meetings, and then we were told, "No, the grand isn't going through." So, then we added more meetings because we thought it was dead in the water until two weeks ago, and they said, "Surprise!"
Yeah, they're not supposed to, there's your voice that you can leave there. I can't follow...
All right, we're not going to be at that worse anymore. Do we have motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both, so curious. Thank you.